गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वर्णारे गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वर्णारे जयो राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वर्णारे जशो दानंदा ग्रोजो जनरण जशो दानंदा ग्रोजो जनरण जामो नकीर बोलो चार जामो नकीर बोलो चार जयो राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वर्णारे जयो राधा माधव कुंज बिहार हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे जयो राधा माधव कुंज बिहार जयो राधा माधव कुंज बिहार हरि कृष्णा हरि कृष्णा 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 हरे हरे हरि राम हरि राम 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 हरे हरे जयो राधा माधव कुंज बिहार जयो राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वर्णारे जयो राधा माधव कुंज बिहार गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वर्णारे गोपी जाना बल्लभ गिरी वर्णारे
हरे कृष्णा, हरे प्रेमतर, पूहू इस इस कॉन्टिन्यू डिक्लास
हरे कृष्णा, महाराधा
यस
हरे कृष्णा, देवटीज सो वी वेलकम एवरीवन फॉर टुडेस थस्ट्यूडे गुरु महाराज सेशन एंड वी वेलकम एवरीवन फॉर दोस्त वो हैव जॉइंट हियर सो टुडे वी विल बी हेयरिंग फ्रॉम गुरु महाराज और कृष्णा’s pastime फ्रॉम गरगिसंबिता सो टुडे इस डी 15th day वी आर बिट डीलेट सो टिल देन वी आर प्लेइंग दिस वीडियो ऑफ़ गुरु महाराज विच गुरु महाराज वी विच विच अवर मीडिया टीम रिसेंटली मेड फॉर 2 मिनट्स वीडियो एंड देन एट 8:05 वी विल बिगिन डी टुडे सेशन सो देवटीज कैन सी दिस टुडे इस दिस वीडियो डी स्विफ्ट एस्केप
डी मॅटेरियल नेचर इस अन वेरी डिफिकल्ट प्लेस आज वो वाज़ सेइंग लाइक यू गो आउट एवरीव्हेयर पीपल आर बीइंग बॉम्बार्डेड विथ ऑल दिस प्रोवोकेटिव अल्लुएरमेंट्स इवन चिल्ड्रन आर बीइंग एक्सपोज्ड तू डेट यस्टरडे आई वाज़ मेंशनिंग डेट सो व्हाट तू डू लाइक यू गेट योर मोबाइल फोन यू गेट योर कंप्यूटर एंड डी चांसेस ऑफ़ बीइंग एक्सपोज्ड तू ऑल दोस्त अल्लुएरमेंट्स इस सो स्ट्रांग एनीवे डेट इस डी कंडीशन इन वन हैंड इस वेरी डेंजरस सिचुएशन वेरी डिफिकल्ट सिचुएशन बट ऑन डी अदर हैंड वी हैव अन वंडरफुल ओपोरचुनिटी इन वन हैंड कली युगे इस टच अन डिफिकल्ट प्लेस लाइक आज वो वाज़ सेइंग लाइक एवरीव्हेयर देयर इस डी प्रमोशन फॉर इंटॉक्सिकेशन, मीट ईटिंग, इलिसिट सेक्स एंड गैबलिंग एवरीव्हेयर देयर इस डी प्रोवोकेशन फॉर डेट बट एट डी सेम टाइम वेरी इजीली वन कैन बिकम फ्री फ्रॉम मॅटेरियल बॉन्डेज जय जस्ट बाय टेकिंग तू डी प्रोसेस ऑफ़ कृष्णा कॉन्शन्सनेस कीर्तन आदेव कृष्णस्य मुक्त संग परण प्रज्यत इन वन हैंड सिचुएशन इस वेरी डेंजरस ऑन डी अदर हैंड डी रिवर्ड इस अमेजिंग डी पॉसिबिलिटी इस अमेजिंग लाइक इन वन हैंड इस ट्राइंग तू ड्रैग अस डाउन तू डी दीपेस्ट रीजन ऑफ़ इग्नोरेंस एंड ऑन डी अदर हैंड देयर इस अन हेलीकॉप्टर जस्ट गेट इनटू इट इट्ल टेक यू सो इसकॉन इस डेट हेलीकॉप्टर जस्ट गेट इनटू इट इट्स अन हेलीकॉप्टर डेट कैन फिट इन अनलिमिटेड नंबर ऑफ़ पीपल सो गेट इनटू डेट एंड स्टे ऑन डेट स्टे इन डेट, डोंट लीव अनदर एग्जांपल ऑफ़ व्हेन वी थिंक ऑफ़ इस डेंजरस ओशन ऑफ़ मॅटेरियल नेचर एंड अन बोट, अन शिप सैलिंग अक्रॉस सो देयर इस डी कॉन्ट्रास्ट इन वन हैंड डी सिचुएशन इस सो डिफिकल्ट सो डेंजरस एंड ऑन डी अदर हैंड डी ओपोरचुनिटी इस सो वंडरफुल
थै-थैंक यू एवरीवन फॉर हेयरिंग दिस सो नौ वी आर नौ वी आर रेडी तू सो सो नौ वी आर रेडी तू सो सो टुडे वी विल बी हेयरिंग फ्रॉम गुरु महाराज डी 15th पार्ट ऑफ़ कृष्णा’s pastime फ्रॉम गरगिसंबिता सो दिस सेक्शन मेनली इट्स ऑफ़ 35 मिनट्स एंड गुरु महाराज इस कवरिंग क्वेश्चंस एंड आंसर सो क्वेश्चंस विल बेस्ड ऑन डेट देयर विल बी 8 क्वेश्चंस सो वी आर हेयरिंग वी मांग पूछियर
इट हस तू बी अंडरस्टूड डेट प्रवोपन इस गोइंग तू ऑफर इट तू कृष्ण एंड देन ही विल एक्सेप्ट इट बट इफ इट इस विदाउट तुलसी देन वी हैव तू अंडरस्टैंड डेट वी आर ऑफरिंग दिस तू शिल्प प्रवोपन एंड आज़ अन गुरु
थैंक यू गुरु महाराज एंड वैन मोर क्वेश्चन वी स्पून अबाउट अब वी विच लव कृष्ण एंड इफ वी लव एनीथिंग एंड एन्यून एल्स पार्ट कृष्ण डेट इस लास्ट सो इट डोंट मी इफ वी हैव लविंग हेयर फॉर रामी लेंबर्स और लाइक फॉर बाली का सिस्टम और फ्रेंड्स, हाउ डू इट
गुड, गुड पॉइंट डी लव शुड बी फॉर कृष्ण एंड डेट लव कैन बी रिफ्लेक्टेड ऑन तू अदर्स डेट लव इस रिफ्लेक्टेड ऑन तू डी अदर्स इन डी फॉर्म ऑफ़ फ्रेंडशिप अफेक्शन एंड रिस्पेक्ट तू डी सीनियर्स इट विल टेक डी शेप ऑफ़ रिस्पेक्ट तू डी इक्वल्स इट्ल बी इन डी फॉर्म ऑफ़ फ्रेंडशिप एंड तू डी जूनियर्स इन डी फॉर्म ऑफ़ अफेक्शन बट डी एक्चुअल लव इस ऑन कृष्ण एंड देन इस डेट रिफ्लेक्टेड ऑन तू आज़ कृष्ण पार्ट्स एंड पार्सल्स ऑल आज़ कृष्ण’s देवटीज
थैंक यू देवटी
हरे यस
गुरु महाराज, थैंक यू सो मोट फॉर योर वर्ष और योर असोसिएशन फ्रॉम पॉलिटिक आई वाज़ लाइक तू आस्क व्हेन वी वर एसाइड अबाउट सरेंडर एंड डेट वी वी शुड ऑलवेज ट्राई तू सरेंडर वो इट वर्क समटाइम्स वी हैव डिस्क्लीनिंग डेट ओह, इस टू मच फॉर मी एंड सो डेट्स रेडी बट वी शुड पुश एंड एंड ट्राई तू डू इट इवन डोंट वी किल डेट, इस इस टू मच डेट्स डेट्स डेट इट वर्क इस डेट वर्क सरेंडर मी
यस, यस लाइक लाइक इट मैन नॉट हैपन जस्ट इमीडिएटली समटाइम्स सम्बडी हस तू ग्रैब यू बाय योर नेक सरेंडर ओके आवर टेंडेंस इस तू बी लाइक दिस एंड नौ एदर वी वॉलेंटरीली बेंड आर हेड डाउन एंड सरेंडर और सम्बडी हस तू फोर्स आर हेड डाउन तू सरेंडर एंड समटाइम्स माया फोर्सेस अस तू सरेंडर ओके सो इट डोंट मैटर इफ इट इस नॉट स्पॉन्टेनियस और इफ इट्स नॉट इमीडिएट और इफ इट इस नॉट वॉलेंटरी बट यू मस्तेक एंड मेक अन एफर्ट डेट एफर्ट वी हैव तू मेक सो मेनी इयर्स, सो मेनी लाइफ टर्म्स ऑफ़ बैड हैबिट्स वी हैव तू लॉड ओवर सो तू सरेंडर इस नॉट गोइंग तू बी इजी बट यू हैव तू कीप ट्राइंग
बट डेट्स डी सेइंग डेट्स माया फोर्सेस अस
माया फोर्सेस इन डी फॉर्म ऑफ़ वी डोंट वांट तू सरेंडर देन समदे डी डॉक्टर टेल्स अस डेट वी गोट सम कैंसर राइट सो दिस इस माया’s वे आर फोर्सिंग अस तू सरेंडर और सम डिफिकल्ट सिचुएशन माया फोर्सेस अस तू सरेंडर लाइक डेट एक्चुअली रिमाइंड्स मी वन ऑफ़ डी गॉड ब्रदर्स वंस टोल्ड मी इन फिलादेल्फिया वन पर्सन यूज़ तू कम तू डी टेंपो फॉर इयर्स टुगेदर ही आर बीन कमिंग, आर बीन कमिंग बट ही डिन सरेंडर और ही डिन टेक इनिशिएशन देन वन दे और ही डिन मूव इन तू डी टेंपो देन वन दे ही जस्ट केम ही सेड आई जॉइंट डी टेंपो सो ही वाज़ डी टेंपो प्रेसिडेंट ही आस्ट व्हाइट ऑल ऑफ़ असर्टन यू वांट तू यू वांट तू सरेंडर एंड ही टोल्ड डेट डी दे बिफ-डी दे बिफॉर ही गोट डी रिपोर्ट डेट ही गोट कैंसर सो नौ सी माया रिमाइंडेड डेट लुक डेथ इस सो नियर सो सरेंडर सो डी पॉइंट इस यू सी लाइक दिस इस हाउ माया कैन फोर्स अस और सम्बडी इस वेरी रिच देयर इट हैपन देयर मेनी टाइम्स देयर आर सच इंसिडेंसेस एंड समथिंग हैपन ऑल हिस उमानी इस गोन व्हेन डी मनी इस गोन हिस रिलेटिव्स आर गोन एंड ऑल काइंस ऑफ़ पीपल आर ट्रबलिंग हिम एंड डिमांडिंग डी पेमेंट एंड ही सरेंडर्स तू कृष्ण सो दिस इस डी पॉइंट हाउ माया फोर्सेस अस तू सरेंडर इन टाइम्स व्हेन यू रियलाइज़ डेट आवर आवर सिचुएशन हियर इस नॉट रियली डेट हैप्पी एंड जॉयफुल एंड प्लीजिंग देन यू फोर्स तू सरेंडर ओके
थैंक यू गुरु महाराज
हरि गुरु यस, गिव इट तू हर
हरे कृष्णा आई हैव रिलेटिव क्वेश्चन अबाउट सरेंडर बट समटाइम्स आई मी वी अंडरस्टैंड सरेंडर आस तू लिफ़्ट इनस डेट आर एंड नॉट ट्राई तू मिनिटेड इट एंड नॉट ट्राई तू कंट्रोल इट बट डी सेम टाइम समटाइम्स सरेंडर इट मींस डेट वी हैव तू टेक डी कॉन्शन्स एक्शन सो देन माय क्वेश्चन इस हाउ डू यू एवैलेट व्हाय तू डू अट डू डी प्रॉपर थिंग
नो, आई आई कुड़न गेट डी मेन पॉइंट से इट अगेन या
आई मी वी अंडरस्टैंड सरेंडर आस लिफ़्ट इनस डेट आर यू सरेंडर तू डी सिचुएशन आर ट्राई तू कंट्रोल एंड समटाइम्स इट विल असो बी डेट यू सरेंडर बाय टेकिंग अन कॉन्शन्स एक्शन सो देन हाउ डू वी हाउ डू वी नो व्हाय तू डू अट सो वी डोंट मेक मिस्टेक
सो यू मींस हाउ तू सरेंडर कॉन्शसली और अनकॉन्शसली इस ऑलवेज बेटर तू डू इट कॉन्शसली राइट कॉन्शसली मींस नोइंग व्हाय वी आर डूइंग व्हाट वी डूइंग ओके व्हाय शुड यू सरेंडर
बिकॉज़ डेट्स डी प्रॉब्लम्स
नो, कृष्ण इस सेइंग आई विल डिलीवर यू फ्रॉम ऑल योर सिनफुल रिएक्शंस व्हाय सिनफुल रिएक्शंस बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ डी सिनफुल रिएक्शंस वी सफर डू यू वांट तू सफर नो डू यू वांट तू सफर नो सो बिकॉज़ ऑफ़ डी सिनफुल रिएक्शंस वी आर सफरिंग इफ कृष्ण टेक्स अवे ऑल डी सिनफुल रिएक्शंस नो सफरिंग सो इन ऑर्डर तू फ्री असेल्स फ्रॉम सफरिंग कंडीशन वी मस्त सरेंडर ओके लुक्स लाइक फॉर ए फ्यू क्वेश्चंस ओके, अनंद
हरे कृष्णा, हरे तू क्वेश्चंस वन इस फॉर डी डेवटीज आई गो माय
Hare Krishna. Two questions. One is from a devotee of mine. He asked a question which I can answer, okay? So this question was that when Sudama starts playing, when the Rupini stopped Krishna from taking the second mauls of the plant rice. So the question is that why did Rupini stop Krishna? Because Krishna is providing all the everything. I mean, maybe if he could take, he would be able to return what he's accepted. And also the tenet was that Krishna accepts everything which is given him in love, so I didn't have any answer for him.
Okay. Because Sudama came to receive Lakshmi Devi's mercy, right? And Lakshmi Devi's limit already reached. So that's why she said, "Look, I won't be able to fulfill if you carry on." Yes, if Krishna takes, that's another thing. If Krishna can do something, that's... But when it is a matter of Lakshmi Devi's jurisdiction, then she has limitation.
Yeah, and the second question is my question regarding the topic of surrender. Like, if you would make it more contextless on, like surrender, does surrender mean taking initiation from the spiritual master and chanting sixteen rounds and following the Bodhisattva principle, just put it in more practical terms?
Yeah, that is the basic surrender. But then listen to the temple president, the service he gives. Execute that service. So this is how surrender becomes more and more extended. And the thing is that, therefore, it's a reciprocal. Like ultimately, the surrender will come to the, "Why are you standing there?" So so the you know, like, it becomes not just a theoretical thing, it is a matter of practice also. The practice will be listening to the service that I am assigned to. These are the practical aspect. Therefore, it is important also that the Krishna's representatives makes the process of surrender easy, not difficult. Like sometimes you see that people come with an intention to surrender and then after sometimes they go away. Why? Because they are not treated properly. Anyway, so it's a two, I mean, like everybody have to make an effort to make life easier for everyone. Especially when we are in leadership position, we should be very careful that we should help others to surrender. Okay, Dananjeev?
About Tulsi, sometimes this is used as a neurotic medicine. Is it proper for us?
Well, if you do that, then offer them to Krishna first and then use that Krishna as Krishna's prashat. You know Tulsi, but non-devotees, they don't know, they can use it. But yes, Tulsi has many medicinal benefits. And it can be used by, but when it is done by devotees, it's better to offer that to Krishna and then use that.
It would be like offering to supermarket, right? Probably it would be like offering to supermarket.
Well, if you can collect the Tulsi, you can, you will offer them to Krishna also, right? Offer them, whole basket full of Tulsi to Krishna, all right? You don't have to, not the supermarket, you don't have to offer the whole garden. Yes, Radhman?
Garden place. And I saw Tulsi tea. That means that we have to boil the tea. Is that proper for us?
It will depend upon your devotion. If you are sensitive about Tulsi, now you don't do that.
Hare Krishna. Thank you very much for your time. I have a question about free will. We are sitting here and we say free will and what this exactly means? How limited is our free will or free?
Free will means we have the freedom to decide what we want to do. And ultimately, it comes to that point whether we'll surrender to Krishna or whether we'll lord over this material nature. Do you have the free will to decide for yourself whether you'll surrender to Krishna?
Yes.
That's the free will. You have to decide. You have the ability to decide. That is the free will. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. So we are more ready to hear about Krishna Pata. So in fact, Gopis, they surrendered to Krishna. So in absence of Krishna, they always express their worship of Krishna, Krishna Pata. So in our case, when we surrendered to Guru Maharas, so and in presence of him, we will be more aggressive, omniscient. So how to realize, how to develop that miscreant, that he is not a mundane person, he is not as a material presence? In absence of him, how to how to be prepared? He is always with us.
Well, it depends upon you individually, like, you know, how seriously you take the relationship, how seriously you practice the process, how seriously you accept the process. Yes, when the person is present, then it is easy to feel the relationship or act with according to the relationship. But when the person is not present, to maintain that relationship is a challenge. That's the test. And at least from Krishna, the devotee's attitude from spiritual platform, like we can see that the sincere devotees, whether Krishna is present or not, they maintain their attachment to Krishna. But those who are not sincere will feel, will see that they are not... So it is a matter of one's earnestness, one sincerity of accepting the process.
In case of Gopis, they always, in absence of Krishna, they always, it's no problem. But sometimes in our case, when we, in absence of Krishna...
Yeah, because there is a difference between your case and Gopis' case.
Yeah, there is a window.
So try to understand that. Don't try to imitate the Gopis, but try to become, try to learn their lesson. Don't put things like that, "Oh, Gopis did that and my case is different. I cannot..." Have you, the question is, have you developed the love for Krishna as the Gopis did? Recognize that. So first try to develop the love for Krishna. Yes, Ananda Vijay?
Hare Krishna. My question is regarding surrender. Sometimes you do see surrendered souls, you know, just before they depart or they suffered nasty diseases or cancer or something horrible of those lines. How do we understand why do they suffer before they depart?
The material nature is a place of suffering. As long as we have this body, the body will suffer. It is not that when you become devotees, you don't suffer. If we become devotees and in this body we don't suffer, then we never want to go back to the spiritual world. This is such a wonderful place. But when we suffer, then it's a, it's a push from Maya. "Why are you staying here? Go, leave this place and go." "Why are you suffering?" The thing is that the Maya is that although we are in a suffering condition, we think we are not suffering. Although we are suffering, we think, "Oh, I'm going to enjoy." But through these arrangements, Maya actually is helping us to become Krishna conscious. Suffer. So it's good to suffer. But if you can attain that spiritual position without suffering, that is better. But if suffering comes, don't worry about it. Always remember that it could have been so much worse. And that's the way the devotee take it, not being affected by the suffering condition. I am remembering Krishna. So my consciousness is not in the body. My consciousness is in Krishna. When you are under anesthetics, do you feel the pain?
No.
Why not? Like, good, you are not conscious. Not conscious of what? Not conscious of your body. So because you are not conscious of your body, therefore body's suffering is not registered. So what is happening? When you are under anesthetics, the consciousness is not flowing through this body. Therefore, you don't feel the body's pain. But that's done artificially. But when your consciousness is withdrawn from the body and projected onto Krishna, will you feel the pain of the body? No. And that's why advanced devotees don't experience the pain, because their consciousness is not in this body. Okay. Yes, Suman?
How do you know whether we're doing enough? So we might have, some of us might have surrendered kind of to a process or possibly all of us, then it would have been. But how do you know whether we're doing enough?
Enough of what?
Like service or...
How do you know? Try your best, that's the thing. It's thought that we have to make it troublesome or make it stressful, execute it happily. And see what is within your limit. Just do that. Like if your limit is 100 kilos of weight, it's advisable that stay below that. Because if you go beyond 100, then you'll snap. So don't overdo it. Do it happily. Okay? So did you find your limit? Very good. Yes?
I don't know if I can provide myself with to this question, but I do like it. So I don't know... That's my last chance to ask my question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm positioned where I am tempted by evil, evil forces. And still, my consciousness is not disregarding this danger. And still, my life of Krishna does not increase a bit under his service in temple. And I'm checking eighteen pounds a day, maybe not every day, I check luggage. But still, my consciousness is still in and I am too scared than you. But I feel only scared and I don't know what to do because I am doing service in temple. But like, I go to postal office, I put a stamp on my letter and I put the letter in the box and it will be taken by postal offices and sent to my destiner. But I have to think about it. The process of going to post is very complicated. There is not sufficient. And I have, that's my situation in Maharashtra. I have like this and I wonder how to do things.
Okay. Vishesh, you're very good that you are rendering service for so many years without deviation. That's a very good sign. And you can rest assured that the letter is stamped and went to Krishna. Yes, thank you. Yes. Tulsi Manjari and then Nayana Manjari.
Hare Krishna. Kumati, you know that Maharaj was a great devotee. My question is, why was his son a demon? Why was his son a demon, Veeravichal? Why was he a demon?
Yeah. Well, in that respect, there is a saying that the son doesn't take the quality of the father. The grandson takes the quality of the father. So Veeravichal took the quality of Hiranika Shipu. Whereas Bhali Maharaj took the quality of Pradhar Maharaj. Anyway, but don't feel upset about that. Try to give as much Krishna consciousness as possible to your children.
Kumati, I wanted to ask also about surrender. We spoke like surrender means to start chanting sixteen rounds under the Bodhisattva principle and follow what the president say. So but on the higher level and the highest level, on, as I think, what do you, what does it means? Like higher and highest?
The highest level, as you are asking, is one sees that everyone else is a master and he is the servant. And the lowest level is one thinks he is the master and everyone else is a servant.
So this is like Uttama platform?
Yes, Uttama platform is
So this is the highest?
That's the highest.
Okay. And I have like a second question, like, is that that Krishna has like specific plan for each devotee? Is that that Krishna has like specific plan for each devotee? Or each devotee is like free to do something like?
Although we say that Krishna has a plan, but ultimately it's up to the individual. As one surrenders, to that extent Krishna reciprocates. Krishna is not forcing anybody.
And you will reveal that?
To the, yes, you will see that when you surrender, according to your surrender, Krishna will reciprocate. Okay. Thank you all very much.
Maharaj, we have two questions on... Hare Krishna, in the afternoon, you told the story of past life of Pradhar Maharaj. You always hear that Sri Nishinadeva took out the dharma for Pradhar Maharaj. Then how is it possible that Pradhar Maharaj is the earlier back when Sri Nishinadeva came? Your question about...
Okay, that's the question. You see, the time moves in cycles. In some previous age, Nishinga they were feared, right? And temple was there. So we have to understand that the temple is from the previous kalpa.
Next question is, I have health issues and have pain oil in my body and I'm not able to make it among the arts. Does this mean I'm on bodily platform and not surrendering to Krishna?
Well, at some point, it will all, it will happen to all of us. The body will be in a state where we won't be able to attain Mangal Arithik. But that doesn't mean that we are in the bodily platform. That's the body's nature. Janmamritu jara badi. But the thing is that when we are bod, when the body is not able to function in Krishna-consciousness, when the body is not able to render devotional service, we have to render devotional service in the mind. At some point, we all will be lying in bed without any ability to move. Should we give up our devotional service? No. Then in our mind, we have to render devotional service. In our mind, we can cook some nice prashad, offer to Krishna, dress him up nicely, make some beautiful fad ladans. Can you do that? Yeah, but we should do that only when the body is inactive, not when the body is active. Render service in the mind. No, that will be cheating. Wherever our consciousness is, we should engage in Krishna's service. Okay, go quickly.
Hare Krishna, a lot of us have distributed either preachers or aspiring pregrants. What are the duties of A, a husband towards his wife and children along with serving Krishna together? And B, of a wife towards her husband and children, keeping Krishna at the center of their preghast life? Can you highly remark this?
If you are at home with your family, try to make them into devotees, turn your house into a temple. So that is how you adjust your situation, dovetail your situation. Yes, most of the devotees will be in household life. But they have to learn how to render devotional service as a householder. Right? It's not that only Brahmacaris and sannasus will render devotional service and the householder will go on a vacation. Answer all questions?
The last one, which was...
Okay, you can take the one from Ramananda. Oh, okay, okay.
Last one is the submission. Why is it that in many stories, in Shri Madhavashiva, this woman is a distraction which is visual progress of the man?
What's that?
Why that beautiful woman is a distraction which is progress of the man? Is it not the fault, it's not the fault of the woman? Women can not help her natural features and these, please explain.
Yeah, very true. The problem is not with the beautiful woman. It's the man who will have to... Okay, it is not that we won't see beautiful women. But when you see a beautiful woman, we must recognize that she is meant for Krishna's pleasure. She is meant for Krishna's enjoyment. That is how we appreciate the beauty of a woman and overcome the tendency of falsely try to enjoy. Who wrote those questions from here only?
Here, yes.
Oh, they're so shy, yeah? So in that respect, Bhakti Siddhant Shashi Thakur is actually saying, the beautiful women are not for you to enjoy. The proprietor of all of them is Krishna, the Yadav. Okay, so there are certain expressions of appreciation. Like, how did you like the prashad? Actually, this is one aspect where everyone becomes very appreciative. Or everyone becomes very critical. If the prashad is not nice, everything is spoilt. If the prashad is good, everyone is happy. I can see how blissful you've become. And although I didn't taste the prashad myself, I could see from your reaction how delicious the prashad had been. So... Some devotees who helped in the prashad area are Champak Lata Devi Dasi and Radha Vinod Dada. So Radha Vinod come here. Here, I'll put Champak Lata's name first. So we are wondering what to do and then we decided that we have some ocean of mercy and we'll give you as an appreciation, token of appreciation.
Hare Krishna, devotees. Quiz link has been posted in the chat box. Devotees can attempt the quiz. Meanwhile, I request Maharaj, Maharaj, may you read the today's quote of Shilagur Maharaj?
27th January. The more materialistic one is, the bigari is false. However, the more one is advanced in the divisional service to Krishna, he becomes free from his passive. Advancement in Krishna-consciousness means being genuinely humble. Simad Bhagavat, shortcut 9th chapter text, 14, June 27th, January 2009. Shri Simad Bhagavat, Shri Chari Swami Guru Maharaj.
Jai. Thank you, Maharaj. So I request all the devotees, they can attempt the quiz. They can attempt the quiz, the quiz link, again, I'm sharing. So I'm sharing the result as well. Maharaj is not here. Total 25 participants, devotees have participated, 27 devotees. And... The first... We can see the result. Sundar Damodar Prabhu, Rani Prabhu and Akash Chaudhary Prabhu. Sundar Damodar Prabhu, Rani Prabhu, they are 100% accuracy. We can sort it by accuracy. Devasis Krishna Prabhu, Sitanandini Mataji and Kritika Gopi Mataji, Gopika Mataji with 100% accuracy. Then we have Akash Chaudhary Prabhu and Shyam Keshav Prabhu, Sundar Nitaai Prabhu, Iswari Radhika Mataji and Anupma Mataji with 88% accuracy. Then comes the 75% accuracy with Divya Damodar Prabhu, Somnath Chakravarti Prabhu and Aparajita Sakhi Mataji. So devotees are still attempting. It's 63% accuracy, Arpita Mataji and Shanti Kamaataji. And 50% accuracy, Sunail Prabhu. Then Hari Priya Mataji, Anandi Gauri Mataji, Scharu Sakhi Mataji. Nita Sabriya Mataji, Sermina Radhika Mataji. Again, I refreshed it. 28 participants and moreover, it's same. 88% equ, 100% accuracy and then 88% accuracy. So devotees can attempt the quiz. This link will be, will be active till today. So we have little change with 100% accuracy. Sundar Damodar Prabhu, Divya Damodar Prabhu, Arpita Mataji, Rani Prabhu and... Dev Krishna, Devasis Krishna Prabhu, Sitanandini Mataji, Kritita Gopika Mataji. Then 88% accuracy, Akash Prabhu, Shyam Keshav Prabhu, Sundar Nitaai Prabhu, Iswari Radhika Mataji, Anupma Mataji, Shanti Kamaataji, Scharu Sakhi Mataji. So, okay. And then 75% accuracy. Thank you, everyone, for patiently hearing today's lecture and if, apologize for the delayed session which, because of which we started 10 minutes late. So hope you all attended and learnt from Guru Maharaj. Next week also, we'll meet in the same time, 8pm, 8am. So then devotees can attempt and they can hear as well. Hare Krishna. Thank you, everyone. Jai Shilabhakti Charu Swami Guru Maharaj Ki, Shilaprayad Ki.